Dupree, we're ready to continue.
Yes ma'am. As you know, our next report this evening is related to the Department of At-Risk Services, which I might add, we're going to change the name of that department soon. Because it's really about, everything they do in that department is about supporting the academic success of students. So, we're going to explore renaming that department. But we're going to focus this evening on 504, dyslexia and RTI, response to intervention. And so, Dr. Lupita Garcia is going to begin that report, along with Michael Ewing, the director of that department. Lupita?
Thank you. President James, members of the board and Dr. Dupree, thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on what we consider some of the most important and special programs that support our children here in Fort Ben ISD. As Dr. Dupree said, with me tonight is Michael Ewing, Director of At-Risk Services, and he will be celebrating when you do change that name. He's been after me for quite some time. We, his department, Michael Ewing's department encompasses several services. One is health services, dyslexia services, RTI services, positive behavior support services, and Section 504, yes, we don't forget that one. And under other duties as assigned, he is in charge of all our summer school programs as well. He has his staff with us tonight, who is very supportive of him. And Michael, you want to go ahead and introduce your staff?
Sure. We'll go from left to right. We have Diana Barton, Health Services Coordinator. Next to her is Shanae Young, At-Risk Coordinator for RTI. Next to her is DeAndrea Brigham, PBS Coordinator. And lastly, Ranjay Gonzalez for Dyslexia Services. And I must say that all of them provide support with regard to Section 504 services. So, everyone has a shared duty with 504.
Thank you. Michael is beginning his second year with Fort Ben ISD. He's been on the job for a year. And in a short year, I must say that Michael and his staff have done a very good job of accomplishing quite a few things that we knew that we had to accomplish. But there is still so much more to accomplish. I might frame this to you as we're just getting started, because there is just a lot to do. As Dr. Dupree said, Michael and I will be doing the presentation. I'm going to be going over with you the scope of the presentation, kind of giving a overview. I'm also going to cover kind of the balcony view of what we've discovered to be our problems or needs assessment, as well as how we are responding to these needs. And Michael will be actually going over some more specific things with you. The scope of today's update is just three services, Section 504, dyslexia and response to intervention. Our problems or identified needs became very clear to us after three not-so-good PBMAS audits, which were then followed by a developmental special education program review that I presented to you about six months ago. You had a booklet on that, and we gave you a very extensive presentation. And why do I say became very clear at that time? Special education is very interconnected with what we're presenting to you tonight. I mean, they're all support services for children at some degree. So, basically, what became evident to us, we were seeing some anomalies in terms of data, and I covered that with you. We are a district that identifies about 6.2% of our population as special education. That was somewhat very unusual, since the national average and state average is about 10%. We also looked at the data and saw that about three times, we have three times the number of students receiving with the autism spectrum disorder, three times the national average, twice the state average. Even more of an eye-opener to us was the learning disabled, the LD, children with learning disabilities way underrepresented in this district. So, as you begin to peel that onion, as I like to call it, and start looking at this data, you know, they're all interconnected, and you begin to see patterns of what might be happening. So, after the audits and after the review, we became aware that part of our problem with our low identification of LD students could really be our RTI model. That we had children with a lot of needs that weren't really moving through those tiers, which Michael will go over with you in a little bit. Learning disabled childrens whose the response to the interventions weren't working, we weren't moving them forward. And we weren't moving them forward for many reasons, and that I'd like to talk about. One is our RTI process was weak. I mean, we'll be the first to admit it. It was very weak. It was kind of scattered. It was different at all places. Yeah, we were doing RTI, and some of it was just kind of like home-cooked RTI. No framework, no, you know, if you kind of get what I'm trying to say. So, it was weak, and it lacked consistency and quality control. We realized right away, we needed a well-defined framework that identified and systematically addressed the needs of kids and supported them. We needed consistency in the resources, and that resources being implemented with fidelity was also very clear to us. We needed alignment district-wide. It wasn't there. And we really needed a plan for maintaining consistency due to staff turnover. We were trained, staff would leave, we weren't checking to see if new people were being trained. And so, the lack of ongoing training and support systems was also became very clear. So, in peeling the onion, you know, RTI then led to, let's look at our 504, let's see what's happening there. And again, our dyslexia, and students with dyslexia, as you know, are protected under Section 504, but also with other health impaired or more severe dyslexia are actually protected and provided services through special education. So, how did we begin? We started seeing all these things we needed, and it was like, where do we start? So, we identified five areas that you see listed here that were most pressing to us, that we felt were the most pressing areas. And when you look at clarification of roles and responsibilities, what exactly do we mean by that? Well, we had the right people, but not necessarily doing the right thing. And by that, I mean, they had the skill set, but we weren't maximizing their skill set or what they had to offer. They were doing other things. So, we wanted to put the right people in the right place, providing the right services for kids. And that's what we decided was one of the big things we were going to tackle. And again, Michael, we'll go over that with you. We needed good professional development in 504. We, for the first time, we have brought a nationally-recognized gentleman who's practices in Austin, Jose Martin, to come and train every single one of our CCCs, every single one of our secondary counselors. Michael, we'll go over with you. We've gone over court cases with them. We've studied, you know, lots of scenarios with them and have trained extensively. That was very much needed. We also discovered right away that we couldn't readily identify our 504 population, the services or their plans. I mean, it was still, we still had to do paper and pencil. And well, how many do we have? Well, we don't really know. And so, we were going, well, how come this list doesn't look like this list? And so, we really looked at bullet number three. We needed to be able to get our hands on data immediately and quickly as we needed it. Also, dyslexia services were not always aligned to the best assessments, practices. One of the first things I did was that we looked at the assessments we were using. They were outdated. We needed to buy new ones. So, all these things were what I call our five-star, you know, really needed to be tackled, these five things, immediately. They were our most pressing things that needed to occur. We, I think, have made, like I said, some progress, starting with prioritizing what's needed. But again, I want to say that we do, we recognize we have a long way to go. But I think we've also done quite a bit in the short time that we've started this process. And part of it is getting the right culture, the right acceptance, the staff accepting what we're trying to do, buying into what we have to do because it's important for kids. Helping them understand that they can't underestimate the value that they play on a child's life, that they play a major role in that, and they need to celebrate that, value it, and help us deliver what we need to deliver to help children be successful. Michael is going to move into a little bit more specifics, and he's going to start with 504.
Good evening, everyone. One of the things that Dr. Dupree often talks to us about in leadership meetings is developing systems that are sustainable. And the first thing that we found, can you hear me? One of the first things that we found with regard to Section 504 was there was no consistent approach to how campuses assign responsibility to the 504 coordinator. Prior to 2014-15 school year, at the elementary level, counselors or APs either had the responsibility for Section 504, but there was no consistent approach. One school would do it one way, and it varied from campus to campus. So, for the fall of 2014-15, we introduced the position of Campus Compliance Coordinator at the elementary level. So, now, we had a position that was dedicated to providing Section 504 facilitation and meetings, especially at our meetings, and also RTI. That was a huge step in the right direction for 504 and other programs. At the secondary level, there was also not a consistent approach. One counselor or multiple counselors or one AP or multiple APs had the responsibility. In cases where there was one AP or counselor providing services for the entire district, oftentimes, that facilitator for 504 did not have a relationship with that family or student regarding 504 services. So, that was a tremendous loss to making sure that the person always had identification of what's going on with their particular child. So, for this school year, we identified the role to go to every counselor to be their own Section 504 coordinator. So, now, counselors see students based upon their grade level assignment or their alpha split. And so, that provides a consistent holistic approach to how we service students and their families with regard to Section 504. The next area we decided to target was professional development. We had so many new counselors and, of course, CCCs that were new to the area of responsibility for Section 504. We decided to have a back-to-basics theme approach to how we provide a professional development. It was our goal to build capacity for these group of individuals with regard to best practices in Section 504 law, process procedures and best practices. One of the first things we decided to do was, we brought in Region Four on three different occasions last year to provide professional development regarding 504. Most recently, on October 12th of this school year, we had our first 504 conference that Dr. Garcia mentioned to you. We, I decided to, I said, you know, I just had an epiphany one day. I said, "Let me bring in the gentleman that I get my training from every year in Austin." So, we brought in Jose Martin, who represents the Council of Educators with Students with Disabilities, which is one of the leading law firms in the state of Texas and abroad for PD for 504 for school districts. Some of the topics that we uncovered included discipline under Section 504, the fundamental processes of 504. We even looked at case studies and how court rulings were decided. We had a lot of good feedback from the coordinators in attendance. We actually gave them a binder to take home with them, and back to the offices rather than at home. But it contained all of their presentations that we reviewed. It also contained all of the case studies and the court rulings that aligned with those particular case studies. So, we had really good feedback. It's something I want to do again in the future. And we look forward to doing that again, to keep PD as a priority for us. 2014 was a big, was my first year and also another big year for 504. We, as Dr. Garcia mentioned, we started implementing an electronic documentation system for 504, called SuccessF504, and we call it SE504 here in the district. This program was launched in the fall of 2014. One of the biggest accomplishments of our department was the first year, we trained over 300 different coordinators and central office administrators in the program. This year, we trained an additional 100 people for the initial training or a refresher for those that requested a refresher training. One of the advantages of this program is that it meets all of state and federal requirements for 504. The system is updated at least once a year to ensure compliance with federal changes that occur in the law. Previously, documentation was completed by hand, on paper. And now, the electronic system allows for seamless transfer of files and live access to students' records. Someone could call me at a campus, and I can just pull up the file and view exactly what they're viewing in real time. So, it's really a good advantage to have that. Another advantage of the program is that the forms are created by the Council of Educators with Students with Disabilities, again, the firm that brought us our 504 training. And so, we have the up-to-date, most current forms and best practices embedded within the system. So, that helps align our meetings and service plan delivery for our students. Central office administrators can also electronically monitor meetings and service plans for compliance issues. We also have the ability to run real-time reports, which is a huge benefit for monitoring areas of 504 and determining other needs throughout the district. One of the, another area within the 504 component is dyslexia services. We had a new coordinator who started in January, and we also had several new reading specialists that joined us last year. And so, I decided to continue our theme with, going back to the basics with regard to dyslexia services as well. We determined that our immediate focus would be on building capacity with the reading specialists regarding knowledge of law and best practices. We immediately purchased the new TEA Dyslexia Handbook for all reading specialists, secondary and elementary, and provided training to each of those individuals regarding updates within that handbook. We wanted to make sure our programs were aligned to the current state standards. We also brought in Region Four during the summer of 2015 to provide training related to dyslexia assessment procedures, laws and best practices. To address our ELL population, which is our English language learners, we trained eight bilingual interventionists in bilingual assessments for dyslexic students who may be identified for evaluation for dyslexia. One of the TA requirements is for each district to host a parent information night for dyslexia students. Well, we go a little bit above that standard. We actually do two information nights, one in the fall and one in the spring. Most recently, on November 3rd, we hosted a dyslexia information night for parents over here at the Annex. And parents received a dyslexia one-on-one overview. And they also got a chance to resemble many stations that resemble 15-minute increments of dyslexia instruction. So, it was a very powerful hands-on experience for a parent who's never been to a classroom to see what dyslexia instruction looks like. And they were able to ask questions to the reading specialists, both secondary and elementary, who were there and participating. Parents also received a survey during this meeting to request feedback on what type of topics they would like to hear at the spring meeting. So, Ranjay Gonzalez will be collecting that information and trying to develop a training that meets those parents' needs for the spring meeting. We also want to take a look at how are our students doing? How are they progressing through the dyslexia program? And also, state assessments and district assessments. So, in the spring of this year, we're going to begin monitoring and providing campuses with feedback on how their students are progressing through dyslexia program. And also, we're going to take a look at how they're performing with regard to the state assessment start, start both accommodated and the regular start. Our next area of focus for the department was the redevelopment of RTI. Our, this is probably our biggest challenge, because it's a district-wide initiative that we were basically starting from ground up again. The redevelopment of RTI came out of a recommendation from the Stetson and Associates Development Review that Dr. Garcia mentioned. And the review identified that a big reason for our low identification of students with learning disabilities happened to be because of our inconsistent implementation of RTI. So, some of our most severe students who were not responding through RTI were not moving through the tiers, which resulted in students not being referred, again, which contributed to our low LD population. The first step in developing RTI framework was to develop an RTI steering committee, which consisted of various departments, including curriculum and instruction, special education, my department, At-Risk Services, the CCR Counseling Department, SIS, Student Information Systems. We had almost every department represented in the curriculum instruction department. The framework is developed on the work of Dr. Andre Ogarnowski, who's a national consultant and author with regard to RTI and RTI resources. We then took a major step and then hired an At-Risk Coordinator strictly for the development of PBS. This position was not available in the district, so it was a huge initiative to have someone who was a go-to person for RTI development in January 2015. Using a phase-in approach, we identified eight model campuses to have identified resources, including interventions and universal screeners. These eight campuses would also receive, or, excuse me, are also receiving the support of the RTI consultant and At-Risk Coordinator on intensive data decision-making processes and just working through the RTI process. It is our goal to replicate these systems and resources district-wide in the very near future. One might say RTI's been around a very long time. What's new about it now? Well, it's not anything new about it. It's been the same. But there were obviously certain aspects of it that were missing in our previous framework. To begin, in the past, counselors facilitated RTI. With our new framework and under TA and national guidance, RTI is led by an administrator as the instructional leader of their campuses. And those meetings are attended by team members from around, from different leaders from around the campus, and they all come together to make RTI decisions for students. The new framework also has specific timelines for guidance within the RTI process. For example, Tier Two lasts from anywhere between nine to 18 weeks, and Tier Three goes from anywhere up to six weeks. In the past, a student could remain in Tier Two or Tier Three for three months, six months, even a year. Again, going back to the special ed review of students not being referred for a special ed or 504 evaluation. These new timelines help us ensure that students will receive a time, excuse me, will receive a referral if warranted and within a timely manner. We also have a focus on universal screeners. And universal screeners administer all students up to ninth grade. And these screeners help us identify students who may potentially be at risk of not being grade level standards. These measures are normed, and they measure automaticity and fluency in reading and math three times a year in the fall, winter and spring. We also had a specific aspect related to using research-based interventions. In the past, schools would, you know, call tutorials where students worked on a worksheet or doing small groups on a program such as Study Island or something like that, and call it intervention. Well, now, our research-based interventions actually target specific skill deficits identified by research interventions. So, we have a targeted focus now. We're talking about research, and they're backed by, of course, plenty of studies that support that have used with fidelity. These interventions will show academic growth for students. Another aspect of the new framework is progress monitoring, which is a brief assessment conducted weekly that allows a campus to determine before a report card grade gets there for students making progress in the skill deficits. And so, we're really looking forward to all of, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. All of these data points are collected to make decisions for our students. Now, I must tell you that ARS has been together for a year and a half now. My coordinators, only one of my coordinators has been with me for a year. The other three are less than a year. But I think we're making really good strides in goals that we're working on. But we also must take into consideration challenges that we face and will encounter along the way of completing these goals. ARS, which is At-Risk Services, is limited to three coordinators, three instructional coordinators to support 74 campuses, one for RTI, one for PBS and one for dyslexia. All three coordinators provide support for Section 504. Nineteen campuses have received the identified resources for universal screening interventions in the new framework. However, alternative resources have had to be identified for the remaining campuses until we secure resources for everyone else. And the consistent use of universal screeners and research-based interventions will continue to be a concern for us without the appropriate support and coaching for these campuses. We try to provide the best customer service possible, but realize that we have some shortcomings with, again, limited support. We're trying to cross-train our staff right now. All three coordinators are working to develop knowledge of RTI. But we need, we're going to look for more boots on the ground to help facilitate this when we go district-wide. Reading specialists are some of our most uniquely trained individuals in the district. They have specific and intense training in dyslexia assessment and instruction. But oftentimes, they are pulled away to do other tasks that take them away from dyslexia services. So, we're working conjointly with senior leadership to align their duties so that they strictly relate to modeling and coaching dyslexia services and literacy guidance. I would like to acknowledge my staff for doing a great job. I appreciate you guys. Also, I want to, yes, I also want to acknowledge the departments that are here supporting, who we've worked collaboratively with, which is something that's Dr. Dupree teaches, special ed is here, after curriculum instruction. I saw a couple others earlier. Kristy's over there, secondary. I see some DSL, Department of School Leadership members. We all work together to make sure that our students and programs are working fluidly. So, Dr. Garcia wants to add a point?
I just want to say that you see five things up there that are identified as challenges. And these five things, you know, they're all doable things. I mean, there are things that we can solve. There are things that we can put our heads together and figure out how to do it. But the one thing that we need to keep driving forth and getting everyone to understand, from our teachers to our administrators, everyone needs to understand that when you let things go over several years, you know, things happen that are not so good. And there's an erosion of trust and erosion of credibility. And the hardest thing for us is a thing that's not on that screen. And that is that we have to work very hard at building relational capacity with our parents and building partnerships with them. Because when parents do not trust us, or parents do not think that we are operating from a premise of credibility or knowledge, a one simple 30-minute meeting, 504 meeting, can take 10 to 15 hours and tie up five or six people. And then, you're talking about 60 hours of work. So, it is very important that if we're going to work smart and not harder, we've got to start instilling in everyone that that is where we need to begin. Because I see this happen time and time again. And, you know, I've been in this department and in this district, and I'm very proud to say this month, three years. I came, I said I was going to be here a year, but I'm just, and I keep asking, "Oh, you're staying another year." I really like it here. I feel like it's very rewarding. And, you know, I said, "Well, I'll come a year and, you know, and retire." But that retirement bell isn't calling me right now. But I'm going to say also that Ginger Caravan, where's Ginger? Ginger's been here three years as well. And we both talk all the time and discuss and we're about where we need to go with our families and our community, because that is really what's happening. And we feel like we're trying to repair what was broken, at the same time, build what we think is the right model. And my mantra to my departments, when I gave them, I won't go over all of them, the five basic things of how I lead, one of them was, my mantra is, "How do we get to yes?" That's the key, whether it's from Title I money, all the way to a 504 meeting, to a special ed meeting with our parents. How do we get to yes? And that's where you need to start. And so, I think we're making a lot of progress. Are we there yet? No, absolutely not. But a lot of it isn't on the screen. It's the human element. Again, I want to thank you very much for allowing us to give you this presentation. And we will entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, and thank you, Mr. Ewing. That was very informative. And I'm sure maybe some of the trustees have some questions or thoughts. We'll start with Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Garcia and Mr. Ewing. That was an excellent presentation. Let me just clarify something. At the elementary level, the work that's being done now, that's, that used to be done by our elementary counselors, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's one of the things that was causing so much grief in those who were here, those that were here, you know, a year or two ago, when we gave more resources to hire more elementary counselors. So, I'm glad to see that some of the things that we do actually make it and are actually helping. And then, I think the same with, you know, you're talking about the universal screeners. I think that was pretty obvious when you came to us six months ago, or whenever that was, that there were some inconsistencies. And I think the data clearly showed that, that, you know, kids just weren't getting identified, you know, on a consistent basis. So, I'm glad you're incorporating that too. So, it's nice to see things kind of come around and, you know, end up actually in the program after we discuss them and sometimes approve things.
And I think the software falls in that category also. That's another thing that you mentioned.
Yes, thank you for that. We love it. We get praise from that.
You like that better than driving to the warehouse to look for somebody's file or something?
Or a campus lost a file or what have you.
Driving around to multiple campuses to find out where it last was seen? Yeah, that's a problem.
We actually have the ability to upload old files into the new system, so it adds some really good perks to it.
We're not like American Express. We don't like the old-fashioned way.
Thank you. Okay. What other comments or questions do we have, Ms. Heller?
Again, thank you for your presentation.
Again, thank you for your presentation. Um, it made me smile, but I, I have a child, uh, he's not in system anymore. He's, he's now in college, but he wa- was also, um, uh, identified as dyslexic. Uh, but it took a while for that identification, and he actually was, um, receiving resources or services, but the wrong type of services. And it's important for us that our children get the correct identification, because then, once he was actually, um, I guess, um, deemed dyslexic, he then immediately, um, we saw immediate progress with him. But it al- it took us at that time, um, almost two years to get that designation. And so I'm really glad to see the progress that the, we're making in this area. And I, and I look forward to hear, hearing, um, um, more, uh, better statistics as we move forward with this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions down here? Miss Tossin?
So I want to start by commending you guys on your progress, because I too am, uh, part of this system, and you can see the work that you guys have done. It's trickling down. So, thank you all for your hard work in this area. Um, I know it's appreciated by a lot of families and a lot of teachers, so I'm going to start by saying thank you for that. Um, and then I'm going to piggyback a little bit. I have a few questions, but I'm going to start with, um, with the question of compliance, because you, we, you talked about compliance and you talked about addressing it, and I'm very glad too that we had the campus compliance coordinators. But talk to us a little bit about how we're ensuring compliance in the classroom, and what are we doing about teacher professional development? Not just our counselors or our compliance coordinators, but ultimately, in the classroom, it's those teachers that are going to be implementing the five oh four plan, the response to intervention, that type of thing. So talk to us a little bit about that.
Okay. I'll address that question. Um, first, let me say that, um, our counselors, excuse me, um, at the secondary level and C C Cs are given a, uh, s- a small presentation to present every year with regard to five oh four and its requirements, including the common, the documentation of accommodations. They have the duty of, uh, reviewing accommodation logs, which are kept by teachers on a nine-week basis. So every report card session, uh, the campus co- uh, campus five oh four coordinator has to review those and make sure they've been implemented with fidelity. And that's how we ensure that, um, uh, teachers are, um, doing exactly as the, uh, accommodation plan outlines.
Okay. So are, are we doing any teacher development in this area though? I mean, like, are we, as far as implementation goes? Because we've talked a lot about differentiated instruction, and I know that we're doing a lot of development in that area, and that sort of overlaps with some of this. So are we, are we working to develop our teachers and how, how to implement? Because I, I know we have the logs, and you can look at the logs, and the teachers are checking off. But are we doing any walkthroughs? Are we making sure that that compliance is actually happening?
Um, I, I-
With fidelity and as it should be?
Right. I would say that we're not doing walkthroughs. Um, one of the things that, uh, we do have now is that we have coordinators that can actually go on the campus and assist problematic situations, or when, uh, campus, a campus coordinator asks for assistance, we go out and we can meet with a group of teachers, or, um, actually go out into a, um, campus and provide a mini session on how to implement accommodations. For example, what does preferential seating look like? What does, um, uh, no assistance looks like? Because, uh, no taking assistance can be in the form of five or six different ways. And so, um, our coordinators can provide that type of, uh, training. But there's no overall training that we do for them, but we do go out and, and, uh, provide assistance as requested by campuses for that area.
Let me just, let me just add that, um, we're not there yet, but one of the biggest moves, I think, in the positive direction is having cross-training with our special education, uh, teachers and our general ed teachers, that we've come, you know, quite a ways. And also having a professional development department, also helping our E L L population tremendously, our E S L population. We've moved our facilitators over there. So, I think that, you know, uh, in, in, in my own, you know, experience as a high school math teacher, I would not have known these things unless someone else modeled them or showed me how to do them. It didn't happen back then. So now that's what we're trying to do, because we do have experts in the area. And I know that, uh, on numerous times, Dr. Hale has gone to the, uh, campuses to discuss what they thought was a special education problem, only to find out that it was not a special education problem, but it was just talking to them and brainstorming how that teacher can implement some accommodations for the students. Are we there yet? No. And that is, that is going to take a lot of hard work and, and a lot of focus. We have included it in our, um, district improvement plan, because we know that's a big need. And we've also included it with, uh, you know, percentage and measures. And, and we, we hope that, you know, we, we have a one-year, a three-year, and a five-year that we want to do. But what hasn't been done in the last twenty years is just not going to get done in the next two or three years. It's going to take time.
Well, and thank you guys for moving that forward, because it, there is, there has to be a first step, and that's what you're doing.
Also want to add that, um, this year we, uh, changed, we adjusted the secondary reading specialists, who work all of the secondary campuses, middle school and high school, so that they have an assignment where they can go in and model for teachers what accommodations look like and what dyslexia strategies look like to help students, um, who are receiving five oh four services. So I forgot to tell you about that as well.
Good. Thank you. Um, just a couple more questions, more, um, like, uh, like, how does this plan fit, um, into our overall district, uh, strategic-type plan? You guys identified for us on page three of the, of the report that you gave us, what some of the problems were, um, like identification of students, the support provided, legal compliance, and implementation. How did you guys, or how did you guys analyze those to find out the why? Did you, did you come up with a why are we having those problems whenever you went to address the problems?
Um, I, I think one of the major sources, again, was especially a developmental review that, um, outlined that, that we had a break in the system with regards to how students were being referred and lingering in tiers. Like I said before, a student could remain in a tier, tier two or tier three for the entire year. Well, now, uh, students are not going beyond nine, nine or eighteen weeks or six weeks. So that was a huge hole in our, in our, um, decision-making process. That, that, um, special ed referral also correlates with five oh four, because if they're still in the tier, they're not getting a five oh four either. And so we figured out that is a huge dilemma. The other thing that we targeted was, um, we had so many counselors who had never had experience with five oh four. We got, we had to start from ground up and just get the basics of the law. And, um, I remember distinctly when I came aboard in the summer, we found out that, um, so, uh, all but probably five C C Cs had experience with five oh four. And so, I, I knew that we had to start from back to the basics and start hitting them with the law, um, best practices, guidance, what is an accommodation versus a modification. I mean, that, that was the why. And then the, the third why that's not on the screen is that when I leave this job, uh, Dr. Garcia and, uh, Ginger Caravan said, we, we, we need you to develop a five oh four in, in R T I in the district. That was my third why. And, and those were my two major goals, uh, coming out of my interview.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Um, so I think my last question is, you guys talked about, um, and you identified some strategies, like evidence-based, um, interventions, um, and that type of thing. How are you guys, and, and I wrote down what you said, it's evidence-based interventions if used with fidelity. So how are we ensuring that they're being used with fidelity?
It's a very good question. Our new framework has, um, opportunities for fidelity checks by an administrator. And so, uh, as, as a, as a student is, is progressing through the tiers, the administrator has to go do a walkthrough, as they normally do any, anyway. They have weekly walkthroughs they have to do for their superintendents. Um, they, um, have a fidelity check, which they're looking for certain criteria in those classrooms. And the R T I team actually develops the plan. And so an administrator goes in there, they know what the plan should look like for a particular student. And so that's how the, uh, campus is doing fidelity checks to make sure they're being implemented with fidelity.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. My last comment would be that I, I'm, I'm glad you guys are addressing this with the tiers. I looked at the pyramid you had, um, and students do many times, I know in the past, have lingered in that R T I process and were not being identified. So I like this. My only other comment would be, you know, when I look at tier two and tier three, I, I just want to make sure that we're not determining where some of these interventions are being implemented and that we're allowing for students, because, for example, tier two says, uh, small g- group instruction. Tier three says, um, grouping with intensive interventions, whereas tier one says general classroom instruction. So, we've talked a lot about, um, inclusive, inclusion, inclusive support services and that type of thing in the context of special ed. And so I would just ask us to keep that in mind in the context of the five oh four-
True.
-R T I framework as well.
And I, I'll address that. Um, we, a, a campus has the autonomy to do a pull-out model or a push-in model. And so, a student can be receiving tier two or tier, actually, tier two, t- students actually receive it in their own classroom. It's not separated. Tier three can come out, or a interventionist can come in and push you into the classroom and take a small group of three kids to the side and do some intervention within the classroom. And so, campus has the autonomy based upon how the master schedule works to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tossin, I also want to say that we just took a group of, uh, principals and assistants to go, uh, visit, uh, an elementary school where they're doing some great things and their scores really look good. And what we saw a lot of was, instead of just this group thing, was blended instruction. Teacher sitting on the floor with a group of kids, another group of kids over here on a computer, another group of your kids reading a book, uh, comparing notes. That's what it's all about. You know, that dynamics, it's, it's, it's really critical. But, um, but anyway, we appreciate your interest. It's, um, job security.
Thank you very much. I, I, I'd like to just ask a question. So I heard you talking about that we have, I, I was confused. We have some walkthroughs happening, but maybe not all that much. We have a lot, really steep learning curves for a lot of staff. Is that, am I hearing that accurately, in that we're sort of at the beginning of this? Or are we, is, uh, what does that look like? Do, do people get it?
Yeah. There are a lot of walkthroughs going on in assistant superintendents. There's just a lot of walkthroughs. What we've done is connect what, uh, uh, the, the items that the principals are supposed to be looking for when they walk into a classroom to see if those accommodations are, are, are going on in the classroom. Because before, what it took, the model we had, and we, we cleaned it up because we didn't, it wasn't working, was to have two different people go do an observation in that classroom. Well, that's just a, uh, not a good use of staff, when a principal's going to be going through there and checking. Now they have a specific one. They look for certain things that they're looking for, and that becomes part of the report. So that's time-effective, staff-effective. So, no, there's a lot of walkthroughs. I think what, uh, what Michael was referring to is that his staff right here has not been doing a lot of walkthroughs. They have mainly, his staff has mainly been going in there, help problems solve. But as far as walkthroughs, a lot of walkthroughs.
Okay. And there was, um, and so the principals, um, have been involved in this training also, and say, they're up to speed-
Mandatory repeated sessions, three hours long, over and over.
Oh, golly. Okay. So they, but, and they get it, is what I'm trying to get to, is they, hopefully, we, we're getting some consistency in that.
Yes, and I think that, that this is what really makes our job so enjoyable, when you see a principal that says that they've done their, their, uh, universal screener. And you, you know, as you saw in that pyramid, if you, you shouldn't have more than twenty percent, uh, of, uh, the kids that, that need interventions. And if you do, you have forty or sixty, you have a tier one problem. And so they're beginning to look at it and having a ha moment and saying, I have a tier one problem in second grade. So looking at their staff, what's happening there? And what we're also learning is, which really was so rewarding to me, is that when they did the universal screener with kindergartners and first graders, they tested that they were ready to learn at the level. So what are we doing to them two years later? Those are the tough questions we're asking.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, and thank you very much, uh, for excellent presentation. Thank you, Mr. Ewing, for your leadership in this area. It's very clear. Thank you very much. Uh, next item, Dr. DePree.
Yes, ma'am. As his, our practice, we have provided in this agenda the, um, act financial reports for the first quarter of this current year. And we don't have a presentation formally for you, but we do like to provide this opportunity for you to ask any questions you might have about that, um, information that's been presented.
Mr. Batte, do you have anything you'd like to, um, point out to us, or anything that you're carefully watching in this report?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, since this is the first quarter, we don't get too, too much into it. Um, we're, we're certainly, uh, doing, being able to do more trend analysis after the half-year, and certainly three-quarters of the year into it. Um, what we're trying to make sure right now is that we're just on track to be breaking even, as we've told the board whenever we adopted the budget, and we are on track for that. The only, the only interesting note on here was, um, the seasonality, seasonality associated with the health insurance fund. Uh, things have been going really well with that, but because we're, uh, incurring all of the, the claims, um, uh, there's a lot of, um, elective surgeries and stuff during the summer. And so you incur those and pay those in the August and September timeframe. And so that's pretty much the only quarter we would have a, we would have a loss. And so I'm looking to see that, you know, back in the positive the next quarter. And so it's just following that seasonality, so that was, was something that I expected to see, and I, and I did see. But other than that, everything's looking pretty good.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? All right, then. Um, next, uh, the board will convene in closed session, uh, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney, uh, and for several personnel matters. The board's now convening in closed session.